A regular meeting of the village board on Monday, May 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all village board members present except for trustee Myers, who is excused. I would also like to welcome our two newest trustees to their first village board meeting, trustee Nyreider and trustee Jan Miller. So I'm going to have to call you by trustee Jan Miller and trustee Ken Miller just to keep everybody straight. I'm sorry, Ken, I'm thinking of your dad, Rick, Rick Miller. I'm looking at him and I'm thinking of his dad. So, all of us could now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Just a couple of things to report tonight. A couple of people have reached out to me via email and via phone call asking what is happening within the village for the Fourth of July. As of today, this date, it is known that the Fourth of July celebrations will be held. The Kiwanis will put it on along with help from the Chamber, and it is on Sunday, which is July 4th this year. The one change that is going to be happening is normally the parade starts around noon, and this time it's going to be starting around 3 o'clock. So the kickoff for the parade is at 3 o'clock. It's the same parade route as it's always followed. So if you've been to the parade before, you're very familiar with it, so nothing's changing there. It'll end up at Fireman's Park, where there'll be some festivities for the public to enjoy at their own desire, or if they wish to come, depending on, you know, what their thoughts are at that time in July of participating in such an event. It's your choice, you can come. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to come. But there'll also be fireworks that night as well. So that's what is happening as far as this day, as the village celebrates the Fourth of July. The next thing that some people have been reaching out to me lately is, for some reason, I've been getting some questions and concerns about some decisions being made by the school board. And my response to them is, contact your school board member. Talk to them, show your concern to them. I can understand it, if you have children in school, that you're concerned about some of the decisions that they've been making, but if it concerns you to that point, please get involved. Please call your representative to explain their decisions and what's happening. Remind them that they are there to represent you and are in there in service to you and not to the staff. But as far as the village board is concerned, we have no oversight of the school board. They are under their own elected body and have their own budget, and the school district does go beyond the boundaries of the village of Germantown, so they have a little bit larger area. But if you are concerned with what is happening at the school board, please do either go to a meeting or contact your school board representative. That's all I have for tonight's meeting. At this time, we can go to announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, and department reports. And we'll start with department reports with trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet Monday, May 17th, 17th at 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you. Trustee Myers is not here tonight?
I can speak for trustee Myers if you want. We decided June 7th, I believe, before the village board meeting at 6 o'clock for the next Public Safety Committee.
All right, very good, thank you. And then trustee Kaminski.
Public Works will meet in this room at 6:00 PM this Wednesday evening.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, or department reports they'd like to bring forward? All right, then we can go on to the next item on the agenda, which is citizen import and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda, but if there's anyone who is in our audience or who is joining us via WebEx that would like to come forward for citizen import or public appearance, you're welcome to do so at this time. All I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Hi, my name's Eric Wertz. I live at W-171-N-10749, Aspen Court. I just wanted to briefly speak about the 2050 Plan. I know it's not on the agenda. I think it's important to get more people involved. I understand that something similar to a postcard was sent out last time. A lot of the people it affected just threw it out and looked at it. I know when I had some work done on, in my backyard, some utility work, the village sent me an entire letter easily addressed from village Germantown that explained what it was, postcard I probably would have thrown out. So I think it's very important you send a nice letter from, that they understand it's from Germantown, and put language in there to let the citizens know how important it is for them to participate, especially the people in an area that you're looking at rezoning or next to an area getting rezoned. And the last meeting, I guess, was online only for people. There's a lot of people that didn't even know how to get into that. So I wouldn't give a lot of weight to the last public meeting you had on it with comments, and I would think a lot more effort should be put into getting more people involved and understanding it. I guess that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you for coming forward. And just in response to your comments, I would agree that there was, even though there was good participation at the last meeting via WebEx, it wasn't as much as I would like to see, but all participation is noted and added to the total of all comments and responses that we have in regards to the 2050 Plan. It is my hope that as things loosen in regards to COVID and the amount of people that can be in a room for a meeting, that we'll have more public meetings where people can come and participate and give their comments directly rather than have to call in or respond to a postcard or go into the website and make comments there as well. I think, as you think, it's important for all residents to be involved and to add their comments or commentary based on the areas that they live in or how it might be infected. And it would be my hope that we can have at least two or three more meetings where the public can have input so that we can make a good decision going forward to 2050. But I appreciate you coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for citizen import or public appearance? Or is there anyone on via WebEx that wishes to make comment? No? All right, then we can go on to the next item, which is consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda, item A and B as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda, items A and B. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers is absent. Trustee Nyreider? Trustee Piper?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, then it takes us to new business. We'll start with new business, item A, right-of-way encroachment agreement, Barley Pop located at North 116th, West 16137, Main Street in Germantown.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Trustee Baum?
Like to make an amendment to make a contingent upon village attorney's approval.
That is your motion to amend?
Just, just, I just leaned over to ask trustee Baum to do it since it looked like he was getting ready to make the motion, and then he stalled on me, which is fine. The agreement in its form obviously isn't complete. For example, if you look, there's the paragraph towards the top of it that says legal description. There's no legal description filled in, so we just look to have that authority to make sure that we get it all dotted with i's, dotted t's, crossed, et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
I'm okay with that, too.
Motion made and seconded to amend. Any discussion on the motion to amend? And for those of us that are watching and don't know what this is about, does anybody want to give some background as to what the encroachment is?
Yeah, I can give some background. Actually, Jody Kozabak is online as well. I don't know if you want to do anything, but I can summarize it. So there was a sign above Barley Pop, above the front door or the main door, and that was put up in the early 80s when the original Barley Pop opened, and since then has just become into disrepair and fallen off, basically, or had to be taken down. In lieu of that, they want to put an awning up in there to present a little bit better that front area and then the main entrance to it. And it went through Board of Zoning Appeals because it encroaches on the right-of-way. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved it unanimously and sent it back to the village board for the final approval, and of course, with the right, with the right verbiage in the contract.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Miller. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Back to the motion as amended, further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is item B, Police Department IT Services. Chief Snow?
Thank you. Earlier this year, we had requested to hire an IT person for a full-time position. We were asked to consider a managed service, which we looked into that, and it looks like that could be a viable option for us. We sent that out for proposal and received five different bids. I included four in the packet. We are making a recommendation to go with SBA Schultz-Bursting and Associates. It was discussed in the Public Safety Committee before this meeting, that we try them for three months, and I know it was requested also that we look at some different alternatives or updating that proposal a little bit.
I can go on and expand just a little bit. I just had some concerns during the Public Safety Committee regarding locking into any long-time or long-term contract with a company I did not feel that was adequate to support our police department and fire department. So we do understand the need immediately for IT services for our police and fire. So for the interim, we are recommending that they, we do a three-month contract with them, the SBA, right?
Yes.
Yeah, SBA, while we do a little more investigation and come up with a better RFQ that can be put out that would adequately support the police department currently and for the future.
Police, Fire Department, and what about village services?
That is also what we're going to be looking into, is how much of a price break can you get when you extend the services, not only to the police and fire, but then across the village board, because you would probably save half the price.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Motion. Trustee Kaminski?
Chief, you're okay with the three-month contract and delaying a permanent solution?
Yes.
This doesn't affect you negatively in any way?
No, it's going to give us the support we need moving forward immediately, and then we'll have that time to look at some.
We think we're going to get adequate work from these people if they're only on board for three months, knowing that they're probably going to be potentially not on board beyond that.
He's a current vendor, and he's also online right now, and he can answer any questions that you have.
Well, I guess that's my question. I mean, I could speak for him, I guess. I would say that, and Steve, if I do not speak adequately for you, please do let me know, but he is currently managing our environment right now for the police and fire. He is very familiar with the software that they use, which is kind of like a niche in the market, and he is trained on that as well. He is doing a good job currently to support them, and I do feel okay going through this interim. I would just like to see some sort of backup and permanent situation. I want to see structure, organization, I want to see a list of assets. I have lots of questions and requirements that we now have three months to gather.
So it's not to say they're not going to get the contract?
Absolutely not.
With an open mind.
Correct. He's one of the finalists.
It's who we've been working with in the past, but now is it an expanded amount of service? Before, it was kind of an on-call-at-will-as-needed, and now it's more of a monthly service based on a monthly payment of whatever it is that they'll be watching or whatever they'll be accessing?
Yeah, that's correct, and he has guaranteed 10 weeks, 10 hours per week will he actually be on-premise, which is going to be huge for us.
And he has adequate staff for that within? That's something to be seen in the next three months, then. Okay. All right.
Trustee Baum?
I'll make a motion to do a short-term, three-month agreement with SBA so that we can reissue the request for proposals.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Trustee Baum?
Do I need to get into the cost of it, the number of hours that we're going to do in these three months, or are we just, that's enough? Do you need to be more specific on that?
I would say that that's enough for right now. I will be getting in contact directly with Steve Storrs just to, and I'm going to be working with Michelle, we'll be in discussions, and I think not even three months later, I would say probably in a couple of weeks, we're going to be more adequately prepared to release a newer RFQ with details and have a proper list of all of our current equipment and dates of end of life, et cetera.
So just for general knowledge, then, is it $3,000 a month for the next three months?
Yes.
That's what we're looking at?
Thirty-seven fifty.
Um.
Isn't it?
The entire proposal will be $3,750.
Yeah, thirty-seven fifty.
So I will add to the motion that it is thirty-seven fifty, $3,750 per month for the next three months. Is there a time allotment? They spend two hours per week here?
Ten.
They spend ten hours per week here, okay? I will, I want that in the motion, too, that it's 10 hours per week.
And that's okay with the second? Anything else?
Can I make a suggestion that to also have it stated in there, that the 10 hours a week is onsite physically, but there is much other work that is going to be going on remotely? So I hope that, I just want that communicated, that that is not the only amount of hours of support that we're going to be getting for them each week. It's going to be more than 10.
Okay, so I'll add to the motion that the 10 hours is onsite.
And the rest is remote.
I think the expectation is, is that they live up to the proposal that they have given us, which is included in the packet.
Only for a three-month period?
Correct. For, yeah, for nine months less, but essentially, yes.
Okay. Trustee Rick Miller?
Yeah, I just, I've been thinking about this, and I'm fine with the three months, but as a thought, we had talked about doing some shared services with the school district. Well, the school district has a pretty wide IT department, and this may be an opportune thing to do some shared services with it. So I'd like to keep that in mind as we look through this and go through the three-month thing, and maybe reach out to the school district and see if there, there's any possibility of working together with this.
That's a good option. That's a good idea. Further discussion? No further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Nyreider?
Aye.
Trustee Piper?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, chief. Next item under new business is item C, Resolution 08-2021, authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $3,200,000 and providing the issuance of sale of general obligation promissory notes therefore. Tonight, to give us a little bit of overview and insight into that, we have Phil Cosson. Phil?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be back with you. In your packet, there's a presell report. I'm going to take a few minutes to walk through that. Since we have a few new trustees, I was going to hopefully take just a few more minutes to talk about process that we typically go through, and we are in the process of issuing debt. So I'll start by saying that as part of your 2021 budget, you go through the process of identifying capital projects. And so you have a capital project budget that gets approved as part of your 21 overall budget. So around this time every year, sometimes late, right around late spring, early summer, you typically have your audit relatively in place for 2020, and then that is necessary for us to start talking to Moody's Investor Service and to potential buyers of bonds. So that's why we pick around this time of year to make sure that all the documents that are needed are in place. So procedurally, as you get ready to finance capital, and a lot of this is laid out in the presell report, is we work with village staff to put together the final list of projects, and that project list is here. And then from that, we communicate with the village's bond attorney, and that's Tom Griggs, who then prepares a resolution. So the resolution you have in front of you tonight is an authorizing resolution, and what that means is gives us permission to proceed with this financing. We're not awarding the financing right now, we don't have final rates right now. It gives us permission to proceed with this, and that authorization, we do two things. One, we start preparing what's called an offering document, which is like a prospectus on the village, and you'll see that when it comes out. And we use that document along with the rating that the village will receive to sell the bonds, in this case, notes for the village. So authorization tonight, if it's approved tonight, it'll come back in a month to your regular meeting, and we'll present the final results at that point of both the rating that occurs between now and then, and we'll take bids the morning of your next meeting and bring that back to you. So that's procedurally what we go through. What we need to prepare, that offering document, which is again what is used to sell the bonds. As part of the packet that you have in front of you, there's a number of pieces to this that go into structure, authority, term and call of the bonds, when are they callable? The rating process that we'll go through, that village staff participates in, the basis for our recommendations of going through this process, the method of sale, the pricing, all of that comes into play. But we also take it beyond that. We've always done a significant analysis of what's the impact of capital borrowing. And in the packet, if you go into page eight of our packet, you'll see we've identified the structure of the obligation and the anticipated rates that we would expect to see. On page nine, we take that information and we expand it out to look at your existing obligations, what pays those obligations. Some cases is TIF, some cases it's levy, and we boil it down to the ultimate amount that you have to levy against your taxes to get your debt for levy number. And we're always looking at that number to determine what's going to happen with your debt levy from year to year. So if you go to page nine, if you look at the far last couple of columns on the right, what you'll see is, even with this capital borrowing, we're expecting the village's debt levy to drop by about $130,000 next year. And that's a reflection of a couple of things. One, growth that you have seen in the village, because you're stretching this debt now over a larger tax base, your existing obligations as they're being paid down and paid off, and what you're adding on with new debt issues each year. All that plays into it to determine ultimate your net levy that you're going to be actually levying for on an annual basis. So that's an estimate at this point, and it'll always be an estimate until we actually take and sell the notes and take bids. So what we would expect in the way of bids are somewhere between, you know, four and eight bids from not just local banks and firms, but also state of Wisconsin, Midwest, and even nationally. So general obligation notes, this is a 10-year note today for another community, and the, what's called true interest cost on that today was 0.97%. I would expect Germantown will do just as well, now a little better in today's rate environment. So what we're expecting to see is somewhere around 1% for 10 years. That's where the market is these days to take on these kind of capital expenditures. So that's the analysis we run. We do have a three-year bond chart, which is on page 11. It shows you kind of what's happened in the bond market over the last three years, and you can see in there, we're not quite at the very low end over the last three years, but really close to that low end of the bond market over the last three years, and it's really a reflection of what you're hearing in the mortgage rates and everything else these days, very low interest rates. And believe it or not, a lot of interest in buying general obligation notes for a highly secure credit like Germantown at 1%. It's hard to imagine people want to do that, but that market is there, and it's a solid market. So we would expect to get somewhere between four and six, eight bids, somewhere in there. And then again, if the market kind of holds over the next month, which we expect it will, you'll be seeing something in that roughly 1% range for the 10-year notes. So we have in the past made a longer range projection than just year to year, where we've done like a five-year projection. I know you have other capital items that you're talking about tonight, and we are more than happy to refresh with all the new numbers and kind of show you a multi-year plan of what the tax impact is of taking on future projects. And I know we'll be working with village staff and putting that together for a future meeting and walk through that with you. So for tonight, this is really just your 21 capital projects that were all identified in your capital projects budget as part of that process that you went through. Of the roughly $3 million, about $2 million is roads, and the majority of the rest is equipment. I mean, that's the vast majority of the expenditures, equipment, roads, and a little bit for parks as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, process, timing, anything else that comes to mind.
No questions. You did an excellent job, Phil, thank you. Board?
I will make a motion to, let me get back to the top of it here. I will make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 08-2021 for authorizing borrowing not to exceed $3.2 million as presented.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? No discussion? One question I have is, you're making, of course, reference to the Department of Public Works, which will require also some additional bonding. You'll be looking at ways to where we can spread that out? Like we've seen some options previously in regards to using maybe some of the reserves to help spread that out, and then some other creative ways that you had talked about as well. So with that, then my question to you is, knowing that that's possible in the next year or two, we always known that eventually we would need to re-update our police station or another public safety building of some kind? What would be, you could work with us as to what would be making sense in the timing of that as well, so that we can actually put something scheduled on the record and not just keep talking about it?
The last analysis we ran included the Public Safety, or included the DPW building in '22, and then in '26, we did show the police, whatever building it was going to be, the other facility. So we had, yeah, we had built that all in to what we had run in the past and presented to the village board, but we, all of that would need to be updated. I'm really going to have new numbers tonight. We could work with staff and run the other estimates going forward. And then just look at tax impact, look at where you're borrowing, where it would take your borrowing capacity and use the fund balance when appropriate. So we did look at all those factors, yes.
Okay. So based on the information that's in page 10 that shows the existing So based on the information that's in page 10, that shows existing debt and then how it kind of gets lowered throughout the years, you're saying 2022 and 2026 seems to be making more sense rather than not 24 to 25? Or police?
You were just told what years you wanted to slot those larger projects. I mean, that was two years ago when we ran.
Sure.
We'll look at whatever's right for you, but when I look at this, remember this does not take into account your normal capital in '22, '23, '24, you know, which we will build in.
Right.
Along with these kind of legacy projects. So there are natural drop-offs that you do have when you look at your debt levy, which is really on page number nine. There are some natural drop-offs that we probably take a look at. One of them certainly is a pretty significant drop-off around '47, '48. So we will look at kind of those natural drop-offs as we would need to take larger debt on. You know, the village's policy has been pretty aggressive. If you looked at financing your normal capital over 10 years, and the state of Wisconsin can go up to 20 years. These legacy projects, one of the things we will look at is do we look at financing them over a longer time period, 15 years or 20 years, and run those scenarios, assuming all along that, you know, those projects you would expect to last for a long time, maybe to be functional for at least 20-plus years. So we tend to look at financing those over a longer time period. That stretches out the payments, it reduces the impact. So those are the factors we'll look at.
Okay. Does anyone know, and I know we've lost our historian, how long the debt was for this building and the library? What was that taken out for? Because those were built at the same time.
Yeah, actually, I can speak specifically to the library. That last debt payment was made a few months ago. So I would assume that the village hall was at the same time. So given the timing of that, it would look to me like there was 20-year debt.
Yeah, I would assume so.
We didn't have a mortgage burning. It's like a big thing for the library. I mean, oh, that's right. That's a big bill. Well, that's good to know that that's now paid off. Okay, interesting. Thank you, Phil.
I have one question.
Yes.
Phil, is there, is there an option to do, or to refinance any of our current debt?
Not at the moment. I mean, we do look at it monthly for every, one of our municipal clients. We'll look at it again here, but we are, there's a couple of factors. One is just interest rates, right? They're low and that would make sense, but call dates are really a function of whether or not you can actually prepay the debt or pay it off early. One of the things that occurred two years ago when the tax law change occurred is there was something called advanced refundings, where you could refinance debt prior to the call date up to, you know, one time. That was taken away as part of that tax law change. It kind of got slipped in last minute, surprised a lot of municipalities. There's talk of that coming back. If that comes back, that'll free up more opportunities to refinance debt, but we do look at it on a regular basis.
You just did it, was it two years ago?
Yeah, we did a significant one two years ago.
Okay. Further discussion? No further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No, in honor of Earth.
We'll see you next month. I'm sorry, we'll see you next month.
Thanks, Phil. Next up, careful. That's why we're getting a new one. Next item under new business is item D, location and design of the new Public Works Building. We have, all right, well, then we'll start that information and background with our village administrator, Steve Kreckel.
I have just some background and overview, a couple of slides to go through, and then we have Mike Paulus from Grave Engineering, who will talk about their analysis. For the public and especially for the new trustees, just some history on why we're having this conversation about our DPW facility. First of all, it is a very old facility that's been kind of cobbled together over the years, you know, trying to be efficient and making use of existing structures. I also just note, I know a couple of trustees have taken the opportunity to go out for some tours to see the facility. If any other trustees would like to do that, please contact me and be happy to arrange it and would encourage everyone to do that. We really started getting heavily into the conversation about significant upgrades or replacement of the DPW facilities about two years ago. We received from the Department of Natural Resources notice of violation of our stormwater permit in April of 2019 due to an illicit discharge from one of the maintenance building into the, into nearby ditch. And basically, what that means is there's trucks that are maintained and washed within those maintenance buildings, and some of the runoff from washing the vehicles, et cetera, was making its way into the ditch along Division Road, which is not allowed under DNR regulations. The potential penalties for those types of violations, although they are not typically implemented for municipalities, they can be, is up to $10,000 per day for violation. So there are potentially very steep penalties that are related to that. Staff met with DNR and their attorneys to propose solutions to resolve the issue without any penalties for the village. We had proposed the implementation of temporary measures to prevent the illicit discharge. What we have now is within the facility, a drainage sump which is pumped into a tank that's on a trailer, and that trailer is taken periodically to one of the sanitary sewer pumping stations where it's empty. In addition, we completed an updated stormwater pollution prevention plan for the site, and the village board adopted a resolution that indicated the intent of the village to permanently correct the illicit discharge as part of a new public works facility. And that was a resolution in 2019 that directed staff to continue the development of plans for a new public works facility. As we talked about on the previous item, Phil Cosson with Daleers and his team were here in 2019 that presented a five-year financial management plan, which looked at, started the discussion about what it would look like to pay for a significant facility like this and how we could potentially fund it. And I'll also note that after taking these steps, the DNR did give us a memo in November of 2019 indicating that they would not take any further enforcement action at the time, I think due to the progressive steps that the village took to at least temporarily resolve the issue. The, as far as the design process, we did have an architect, an architectural firm that worked with us initially to look at what potential costs for the facility could be. The initial preliminary design estimated cost was a range of $23.4 million to $32.2 million, and that was without the cost of extending sewer and water from its current termination point along Freistadt Road, further to the east on Freistadt, and then up to Vision. And that is something that we would have to do, we would have to have a sewer, a sanitary sewer connection to the facility to resolve the DNR issues. When those, we brought those initial cost estimates forward, the direction from the village board was to sharpen our pencils, take another look, see what we could do for a dollar amount that was more along the lines with some of the initial numbers we were looking at as part of that financial management plan. We did come back with a significantly scaled back alternative design that was presented to the Public Works and Highway Committee. That had an estimated cost of $10.4 million, again, without the cost of the sewer and water extension. It would have continued to utilize the old village hall building that was there and really focused on minimizing the, any new construction. However, there were some real concerns with that. It was, that design was not adequate for future DPW needs. It would continue some of the operational and space issues that exist there. And also, as we've learned more recently, there are some concerns about the structural feasibility of the design and the way some of the buildings would or might not work together. And we brought on Grave to, in March of this year, to take another look at the design of the building and help us to analyze alternatives. One other thing that I'll mention when I, when I talked about these estimates of 23.4 to 32.2, and the $10.4 million estimates, those were only the estimates related to the construction of the facility. And I want to kind of highlight that because when Grave is up and presenting some of their estimates, they've also included, tried to get at the full cost of the project so that the village board knows that, with the goal of no surprises. So for example, there is, at some point, we would need to take down the old buildings. That's not in the numbers that were presented previously, it's in the numbers that Grave is putting together. There's a number for some other factors which they'll go through, which make these comparisons not quite apples to oranges, but I think it does give you a sense of the range of the cost. Some other key information here, the village board included $750,000 for further design work in 2020. Over $700,000 of that is still available. And the bulk of those funds, if we continue to move forward, would be used to prepare final design and bid documents, which is a pretty extensive process in and of itself. And then finally, on this slide, the village board included as a placeholder in the 2021 budget, $23,450,000 for this project. That's not part of the borrowing authorization that you just looked at, that you just approved earlier this evening, but it would require separate action when we get to that point in the future. So as Grave goes through their presentation, there's a couple of key questions for the village board. And in order to move, to continue to move forward, staff needs some direction, some feedback from the board. First of all, the first question is, should we continue to work on design and bid documents for a new public works facility at the current location? And we're going to talk about why that may, what the advantages, disadvantages of that are, or should we be looking for a new location for a public works facility? And a key part of that issue that as Grave has gone through their analysis, they've determined that it's not feasible to construct the new facility at its current location without affecting the baseball facilities that are also located there. So if the answer is, is yes, we should continue to work at the current location, then a follow-up question to that is, should we also be then working at a new location for a baseball facility and trying to accelerate those plans? So those are the key questions in a brief overview. If there's any questions about the background or that piece of it, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Trustee Peeper?
I do have a question. How many baseball fields are looking to be affected by this?
It would be, there's three fields out by the public works facility, two smaller fields, one appears to me to be more of a T-ball sized field, and a younger little league, and then a larger field that, and all three, I do believe, get some usage.
So all three of those would be taken down?
Yes.
And is there currently any plans in place to replace those three fields? Because right now, I have lots of kids in baseball, and it is a fight to get on the field. We are, we have a shortage for fields, and now we're going to take away the majority of them?
I, personally, I certainly understand that. I've been a little league coach, I've coached, you know, club baseball, I coached basketball, I coached volleyball. It is always a challenge to find fields, and there is nothing that is personally more important to me than, other than my job and my family, youth sports. I spend a lot of my time doing that, and I certainly understand that. And there are very few issues that, all issues get to me personally. I try not to allow that into my presentation to the board, but this is one where I do believe, I do care deeply about it, would like to see the replacement of those fields, and I believe that we can get there as a village. But we would have to start moving forward very aggressively with a planning process to make that happen.
So did I hear that right, that currently there are absolutely no plans to replace those three fields if we go that route?
To answer your question accurately, yeah, currently there are no plans. Does that mean that that is what is going to happen going forward? No, I don't feel it's right. And I think trustee Hudson has some input into that as far as a park and rec commission meeting that he was involved in about a week ago, and some of the things that were said at that meeting when they were looking at their five-year projection plan for services to the community.
Yeah, thank you. So, so I think first, it's important to understand that it's more than just three baseball fields. There's a lot of history there, but there's also some buildings there also. At the last park and rec meeting, probably 45 parents of children came and voiced their concern and their willingness and their openness to work with the village to develop a plan to transition those fields. But they, like I'm sure all of us, want to make sure that there is somewhere for them to go. They are a very passionate and involved group of people, and I have no doubt that they will make their voices heard.
Would I feel like right to remove something without having a plan in place to replace it? Just to take it completely away would, in my, in my opinion, would be wrong. And I would work, as long as I'm still on this board, to find a way to try to replace it or make it better.
So does that mean that the only option left then would be to explore a different location for the new public works building?
I think it is an option that is part of the presentation as what they're looking for direction from this board tonight.
So that's, but that's the only option that would save the fields, is looking for a different location for the public's works?
That, you, there's, there is no way to put a new public works building on that piece of property and keep those three exact fields. It doesn't fit.
And I think I know all of us as parents on the board who have had children and know how important baseball is, and especially to the village of Germantown. I mean, the outcry, if you destroy their fields without having something else in place, it's going to be big, and I would support them fully.
As would I, because I was involved in a program similar to that when I grew up in West Alice in West Milwaukee, that I spent a lot of time with from second grade all the way through to high school. I played, you call it intramural, call it municipal ball, call it whatever you want to call it, but I was involved all the way through. And it's near and dear to my heart as well. Village attorney?
I think one of the key components of the discussion this evening is, while Steve kind of phrased the last question there as, should we work to identify an alternative site? The real answer is, is that we have to. There is a lease that is in place with the little league that lease runs for, you know, at least a number of years beyond what we're talking about in terms of, you know, putting this building in place. And so if we want to build the building now, we either need to find a different location for the building, or we need to find a location for the baseball facility, because the lease does provide that, you know, upon mutual agreement, we can, you know, eliminate that lease and terminate it. And so, you know, the only way that organization is going to do that is if we have an alternative location for them to go and utilize. So, you know, really, the question is, do we look to find somewhere else for baseball, or do we look to find somewhere else for the public works facility? That's really the question.
Can I ask what the parents thought? They were very vocal that night. Did they want a new location for their fields, or did they want to keep their remaining ones?
I don't think it was in either or. I think the parents were... I think the parents were very clear that they are willing to work with the village of Germantown to accomplish a mutual goal, which will benefit the village of Germantown and also help to promote baseball within the village of Germantown.
And they more than stressed their willingness to not only work with the village to help locate, relocate, or rehab, depending on what happens, but also a very strong message in regards to helping in fundraising and creative ways for monies to be placed into whatever the result of that action is.
I agree.
Sounds like the village has a very great resource that shouldn't be passed up when looking into this then.
Very strong response at that meeting.
If those are the questions that we have at this point, we do have Mike Paulus from Grave here. And he's going to walk through the analysis that they've done. I think it's important as we go through this that the public and the village board understand the reasons why we can't make it work out at that facility. So, I think Mike would like to come up. Yeah, the, up on the screen. Then it's in there in the packet.
Thank you for having us this evening. Mike Paulus at Grave, principal of the firm, been there for almost 28 years. I lead our municipal group. Steve and Larry brought some board back in, Mark, as Steve mentioned, to take your public works project forward. So one of the first things boys consider is, what are you looking for? Kind of what we call the programming phase. So with me tonight is Wayne Tillman, project architect with Grave. Wayne, would you give a little wave? There's Wayne. And Wayne will walk you through the meat and potatoes of the presentation a bit. And also with us is Mike Moore, president of Moore Construction. There's Mike in the back. And we brought Mike on board as part of the team to provide the village with the best cost estimates we can. There are no guarantees with the cost estimating, but Mike's certainly better at them than we are. So that's why he's on board to help us through this process. So again, the first phase, the programming phase, we met with Larry, Scott, Paul, Tim, the staff. Several meetings, talk about what they have, what we should plan for, future needs, try to size the building. So right now, we're just trying to get an idea, how big of a building do you need, you require for now and into the future? And then with that, we started looking at your site to make sure the building could fit on your site, along with the other amenities that DPW has, DPW functions, store owner manager, things of that nature. So before we get too far ahead of ourselves with the design, we need to figure out, size the building, make sure we're still running within budget, and then kind of go from there. So, with that, Wayne, if you don't mind coming up and walking through your details of programming phase, please?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. If you want to stand on. You can start with us. Okay, so we need to kind of determine how big a building we're looking for. And the first thing is to identify all the equipment that's going to be stored in the building. So, this particular sheet identifies all the equipment that Streets have, and it's drawn to scale so you have an idea of what some big pieces are and some small pieces, which affect us when we lay out a floor plan of what pieces of equipment that are similar should be grouped together. So, this is all their plow trucks. Our large, these are pickup trucks. These are large pieces of equipment. Here's some trailers. This is the general equipment. They take up the entire sheet. And, sorry, I have to refresh my mind. So, you'll see on the bottom down here that it tallies up to 15,207 square feet. Now, that's approximate, but that's based on the sizes that we receive from Streets. We've gone through several revisions where we've gone through the equipment that we've identified. Streets has looked at it. Some of the equipment maybe has become sold and you no longer own it. Others have just come in on order. So this represents everything that Streets has to house. The next sheet is, that's the right one, is parks, sewer, and water. And they're color-coded, so when we look at a floor plan, we show pieces of equipment. When you see the red piece of equipment, you know that it's going to be Streets. When you see green, it's parks and so forth. So, all this major equipment in here is parks. This is all sewer. This is a combination of sewer and water. Between the water and the sewer department, the water department equipment. And then this equipment in here is future. So, all the departments look through what's there. They're projecting what they would need as the village continues to grow, and we've accounted for it, so we make sure we have space for it when they acquire it. The next sheet. The next sheet is the administrative areas. So, those are the offices, the workrooms, parks, finishing shop, everything that's not necessarily equipment, but we have to have a space just like we have here. And when I go back to the sheet we had before, which you don't have to go to, the sewer, water, parks, that accounted for 10,663 square feet. When we look at this area in red, up at the top of corner Streets, below is parks. To the right is sewers and water below. And then common spaces, like the conference room, locker rooms, break rooms, everything that would be shared by all the departments. And then on the final right, which is more in the gold, is the mechanic's space, which is going to be their service space, their offices, all parts storage, tire storage, tire shop. All the things they need to survive. We end up with office space of 14,199 square feet. Equipment, which is going to be equipment that has to be serviced, so you're going to have to have an access aisle to come into it, come out of it, which requires more area than an office space does, of 9,210 square feet, for a total of 23,409 square feet. Now, the numbers, just, they're numbers, and they might be insignificant, but at some point, they lead us in a direction about what size building are we looking at? We look at the next sheet. Here, we're looking at outside the building. And to save some space where we could, we've moved equipment that could be stored outside instead of being stored inside, which is typically trailers. And then we have, at the recycling center, we have the screener. And that doesn't account for any of the square footages, but it will have to count for, when we do the site work, we have to somewhere have parking spaces and access spaces to get this equipment. And then there's outside storage areas, like the spoil bin, general yard storage, sand and stone storage, and everything that's in that bottom line on the bottom. Okay, and that's all exterior storage. Now, this is on the bottom, the red on the bottom, it breaks down everything from the other sheets. And when we look at office equipment or office space, you have a office area, we'll say, and we account for an additional roughly 25% to get access to that space. So you're going to have hallways, little aisles, something that gets you there. That's above and beyond what the office space square footage is. And when it comes to vehicle equipment, that's the killer because you're roughly going to need about another 250% of what the equipment space is. So if you have any piece of equipment that's 10 by 20, that's 200 square feet, you're going to need another two and a half times that just to get access to the parking stall. So you pull into the parking stall, you got space on both sides of the vehicle, you've got space in front of it, you've got the aisle way to get to it. So when we take the overall equipment and office shop areas that we accounted for, and we add in the access area that goes with it, we start to rough out how much of a building we may need. So, the office area was 14,199 square feet. We need another 25%. And these are rough. I mean, it could be a little more, it could be a little less, depends how the floor plan lays out. We end up with 17,749 square feet. When we go to vehicle equipment, we have 35,170 square feet. The circulation is another 250%, which is another 87,925 square feet, for a total of 123,095 square feet. So when we take the office area and the vehicle equipment, and we add it together, we're looking for a building that's roughly 140,000 square feet. And it's based on actual footprint of the equipment and the access that it takes to get to that equipment. Depending on how the floor plan lays out, maybe we can trim that down a little bit if we can find some efficiencies. It could be possible it doesn't lay out as well as we'd like to on the site and might grow a little bit, but our point, our starting point we're going to work at is roughly 140,000 square feet. Could we scroll back up to where we were in the beginning where we showed the five buildings, please? That's good, right there. So, right now, sorry. There's five buildings on the site. Three of them are blue and two of them are bronze color. The goal is to keep buildings four and five, which is the bronze color, and potentially tear down buildings one, two, and three. And the reason is to work around those buildings looks, one, two, and three, looks like it could be an advantage, but it's not. It would impede the flow of how a building were to lay out. Plus, it's really not built. They have a large building next to it, so there'd be major additional funding to structurally reinforce that. Plus, it's not ADA accessible, and there's a whole bunch of factors that roll into it. So the thought was, is those five buildings now account for about 40,000 square feet? Buildings four and five, the bronze color buildings, is about 10,000 square feet. So if we can save four and five, we pick up 10,000. That reduces the building size from roughly 140,000 down to 130,000. Now, would you mind scrolling back down to where we were before? That's great. Okay. So, using a building that's 130,000 square feet, if we put it where the existing buildings one and two are, you'll see that we are encroaching and taking the majority of the property to the guy next to us. And I guess he'd probably frown on that since his house is right next to that. So, although the five buildings that are there look really big, when you compare that to what your needs are, which is another 130,000 square feet, the building we end up with is roughly 256 square feet by 480. Okay, now, that's a footprint only meant to identify the square footage of a building. Depending on how it lays out, that building might get a little wider, which means it shrinks a little bit in length, or it grows in length and it shrinks in width. But whatever you do to that building in one dimension affects the building in the other dimension. So you can see, whatever we do to fit it in there, we might shrink it down lengthwise, but then it grows widthwise, and it becomes a problem to fit the site. And it really doesn't fit the site well, even if you own that property, to get access in and out of that building with large plow trucks. So, that really, locating the building in that location is really not a viable option. Want to move to the next one, please? Okay, so then this option said, well, what if we stayed in a DPW location and we turned the building and ran it along division? Well, we now wipe out all five buildings, including building four and five, which means we have to account for the 10,000 square feet we saved reusing those two buildings. So now that building has grown to 140,000 square feet. And you really don't have really good access coming in and out of the building, and you don't have any storage that you need, which was accounted for on one of the last sheets that we had. So, this stays on basically the DPW site, but it really doesn't work running in this direction either. Would you mind the next sheet, please? Okay, now, this is where we're looking at the ball fields. And we didn't initially look at the ball fields because we were thinking, hopefully, we could make it on a DPW site. But as you saw, it doesn't fit the DPW site alone. So even if you put it on the ball fields, it fills up that whole property. So, the ball fields, although it looks big and it looks like it's unlimited area, it's still, somehow we'll try and make it work, but it's not quite as big as you may think it is when you look at a building that's 130,000 square feet. And we're still trying to save buildings three and four to save 10,000 square feet. So, we have to account for the equipment we said we were storing outside, the spoils, bins area, the water fill area, the fueling station. So, if you have access coming in off either end, coming in on the side, that area all around the building is paving. So it doesn't leave you a lot of space to put those other things without trying to locate them in a slightly different orientation. The other thing that comes into play, as you can see on the end of the building by buildings four and five, is when you look at that site, you'll see that that's actually a hill that's maybe eight feet plus or minus over what the baseball fields are. So this would be problematic coming out of the building on that location because we'd end up rolling in right to the hill, and now we've got an eight-foot grade we have to try and accommodate. Want to move to the next one, please? Now, we're not saying this is the solution, but this is a little different approach. Is we can fit all the departments in one building and possibly wing out the and possibly wing out the mechanics bay in another building. And if we did it on the right side where the mechanics are, then all the other building departments are in that main building. And we're able to, we haven't changed the square footage, but we've changed the footprint somewhat, which fits the site a little better. And, but again, we're going back to most of that site around the building is going to be paving to get you access into the building and out of the building. And it parallels that, that drop, that hill that we have. So if we tie, tuck it tighter to that, we could put a mezzanine on that second floor of the office space and potentially downsize the, the building somewhat where we could park pickup trucks underneath the mezzanine and move the office spaces to the mezzanine, which overlaps our, our floor needs in one floor area and somewhat decreases the size of the building. But we're not going to know that until we have a direction of where we should be going. So I, I think what we, what we're, what we're showing on this one is there are the two sites. The area at the top of the DPW is, is about five acres. And the area to the bottom of, of where the fields are is about seven acres. So you have a little bit of over 12 acres on the site. It was possibly thought that maybe if, if we use the ball fields for the DPW, maybe the PD could use the DPW site. And it doesn't look like it, it looks like DPW could probably use up most of the site for outside storage and the building itself and to accommodate the change in grades. And then I think the last one was just kind of an overall, oh, last one, we're going into costs. So before Mike Moore comes up, does anybody have any questions that, yes?
I do, I just have one question. About how many acres of land do you think storing all of this equipment in the offices and every, all the needs that we have, how many acres do you think would be appropriate?
The building alone takes up over three acres.
So the building alone is three, so probably, and then the parking lot and?
Well, it's, there, there's.
What would you say would be an adequate amount of acres, per se, if we were going to look for other land?
It's, it's a fair question. To determine that, we'd have to see what the area of the land is, the footprint of the land, and then how we would adjust the building to fit the footprint. So the, the, the building is one aspect. Getting access to the building, through the building and out the building, and then to all the storage spaces outside is, is a whole different design. So they're like two designs.
Village Administrator?
Just if, if I could, and, and I appreciate Wayne's response to give a, a, a complete answer. You, I think they'd have to see the, the site, but, but I think just to give a ballpark, no pun intended. I think if you, if you look at the acreage on the, on the, on the map that, or the aerial photograph, that's one slide up. There's about 7.8 acres where the baseball diamonds are, five acres where the current DPW site is. So that's a little bit under 13. And then you can't see it real well in here, but if you look in the, in, in the upper part of this photograph, there's also a site with the salt dome and, and some additional outside storage. That's a part of those operations. And I believe that's another two or three acres. So I, I think to, to size this and get all of the, the space on, you're looking somewhere in the range of, of 15 to 20 acres. That would be necessary. And if that is, if that is something that the village board is interested in, in looking at, it's also important, remember, it needs to be connected to sewer and water or, or able to be connected to sewer and water. And if it was relocated, that we'd have to be looking at the, the salt dome and, and some of that other, so those other facilities for relocation as well.
There is one more to add to that is in the middle of buildings four and five is a cell tower, which is nothing we can do with. So we have to work around that cell tower.
Trustee Hudson?
Yeah, so, so first I want to say that I was one of the trustees that recently toured the, the facility. And I want to thank Larry for answering all of my inane questions and, and educating me on, on the needs. This, in my opinion, should be the highest or one of the highest priorities that our village has. It is long past time that we take action on this. One of the things that I'm interested in is if, if we're going to build a facility for 20 or 30 years, what I didn't hear you say was, was growth. So these plans, is this to replace what our needs are today? Because I'm concerned about what our needs are going to be in 10, in 15, and 20 years. We can't build a facility that houses us today. And I don't know if 140,000 feet, it might be big enough today, but we're going to outgrow that very quickly with how the Village of Germantown is growing.
When, when you referred to the sheet, and that would be the sheet that you have, and it has the parks, the sewer and the water. On the right side is future equipment. And it picks up four plow trucks, three, three pickup trucks, Kubota, two Chevy trucks for the water and a trailer, and five pieces of equipment for parks. So this was everything they felt that could come due in about a 10-year period. So we feel that we've accommodated everything that you have now and equipment that you could acquire in 10 years. Any other questions?
Before we get into the cost, you, you keep showing this, this big building that we're trying to put on a small piece of property. What, can somebody tell me why we're trying to save four and five and what kind of buildings are they? Aren't they steel buildings? Four and five? So basically they're sitting on a slab and they could be picked up and moved if they had to be? I mean, do, do they have to stay there forever? Because they seem kind of wedged in there right now. Like we had some space, so we'll put building four and five in here because it makes sense based on the other buildings that are around there. We're, we're looking at starting with a clean slate now. And you're trying to put a big square building in a trapezoid. You, you never, it's never going to work. David, help me here. I mean, is it, is there a way, is there a way to use the topography to our advantage?
Well, first addressing buildings four and five, they're big enough. And with the column and beam structure, they won't be easily moved. But the reason why we tried to save them was we were trying to keep the cost down. The original layout that was shown prior was 175,000 square feet. And, and it was starting to cost too much. So our goal was to take a look and reasonably see how we could be a little more efficient and keep the cost down. So.
It seemed to fit it on, on, even if we take the ball field, we can't seem to fit it in a way that looks like it works well, like you could make a path around it. So either you're going to use all this property down towards Freystad Road and leave the property that's up around 145 for, I don't know, something else. Or you're going to try to squeeze it up along 145 and, and, and it, it just doesn't fit. We seem to be trying to shoehorn this thing in, on a piece of property that, I don't know if it's going to work.
I would agree.
Break it up.
I'd agree with you that if, if this were a big square site, we could make it work easier, but it's not. And we've got that triangular shape coming out with a DPW, and we've got the cell tower in the middle.
And you have a significant drop from.
And you have an eight to 10 foot drop. So we were trying to work within the site that was there. If our preference would be, it would, could be a different site that didn't have those obstacles.
How much space do you need around the building, drive lane wise? How far off the property line does this have to stay?
To get a turn in, in a, in a plow truck, you're probably looking at 50, 60 feet from where the building is to where the property is. And that would be a tight turn. You'd like to have a little more than that. The rest of the vehicles can get in there kind of easily, but, but the plow trucks are obviously a bigger monster to, to make turns.
Is this, does this building typically have multiple exterior doors that on both sides, I'm just overhead door after overhead door, or is there one on each opposing end that I drive in and drive out?
The most efficient way would be that you would come in on one end and you'd go straight through the building and you exit. And, and in this case, you'd probably have two doors on an end because you'd have two aisles with four rows of parking coming out on the end. Now that could take care of the DPW and the parks and the water. But we still have the mechanics and the mechanics require more drive-through spaces. So they can drive, you know, finish the car, not back up, but drive through. And, and that was where the wing was coming in where we could have two stalls. They could drive through an empty stall and get out or back up. So there would be a series of doors and there is, yes, there's quite a few overhead doors that, that are needed to get into the different aspects of the building.
So if, what was the size, the dimensions of the building that you initially stated, 250 by 450?
480.
480, plus another 100 feet or 50 feet on either end for trucks to turn in. You're looking at 580 feet and the frontage on Freystad Road is 562. So if we actually diminish the turn radius or shrunk the building a little bit, you could have the building parallel to Freystad Road. And you could, instead of that being a mechanic's wing, you could make that an office wing that would make a nice presentation to Freystad Road. And have Freystad be the front door of this. And up against the hill would be the backyard, back lot that would be somewhat blocked by the hill. So people wouldn't have to look at all the trucks, they'd be downhill from that. Would that be a alternative scheme five?
That's, that would be an option. What I would see with that is that the moving, moving the building parallel with the, the drop off, the, the hill could allow us to take advantage of a second floor or mezzanine based on the height of the building, since the building is going to be rather high anyway. We're probably looking at 24, 25 foot clear. So we could service a first floor there and we could service a mezzanine. And the mezzanine could come in at grade because of the hill. And it would be ADA accessible, but we'd probably need an elevator to get us at least in that area down from the administrative office areas down to the ground floor.
Once, once you go two-story, you're going to need an elevator regardless. Whether that's to get up to a floor or down to the floor. I need to get from the work floor to the offices or from the offices down. So I'm going to need an elevator either way. To try and overcome ADA compliance by trying to force this against the hill and put the building at an odd angle isn't working with the site, it's working against the site. If we try and front something and go parallel the Freystad Road, it squares off the building, it squares it to the site. I've got convenient drive around the building. I've got a front, I've got a back. I just think it, it makes it much more simpler. Trying to work with the hillside complicates things.
You've got four and five, it's kind of hanging out.
Do I, well, if I'm building a full building, why am I saving four and five?
Because it's cost.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sure we can leave them there and use them for a while. I don't know if you can move them. I don't know what the structure is. I haven't seen it. But I, but even, so it's over there. It's a little bit farther away. I'm storing stuff in there. It's not like I'm trying to get in there on a daily basis.
It's either you're using all one side of the property and, and leaving the rest, or you're using the other side of the property and leaving the other side. I mean, it, it, it just seems to kind of
Yeah.
outbalance it. You, you can't find balance on it.
No, and I, I.
The way it works on, on this spot.
Yeah.
It's difficult.
If I would, if I were to stay here, I would put it flush with, or parallel to Freystad Road and let the rest of the site develop as something else.
It, it makes no sense to, to make a right angle building of any kind?
An L-shaped building?
Yeah.
That it's, it's, it could be possible.
But the, the practicality of the layout, as I heard, is two parallel drive-through lanes. Putting that on an L is challenging. Unless I'm putting shop over on one side and office above, it's not going to be a great L. It's going to be a little, little leg off to the side, but it's not going to be 50/50.
Well, that, that was the advantage of, could we go back to the L-shaped? Okay, and, and I don't want to say that this is the ideal solution. It's not. I was just looking at it from a different perspective. But if you're coming in on one end of the main building, you can come out the bottom with, with two overhead doors. And that comes out at grade, which is below the hill. And the hill is budding up against that face of the elevation, which allows us to bring in at, at a, a mezzanine level.
The north side.
North side. So it, it was a way of, and this building doesn't reflect it, but the building could be reduced in size somewhat because we're moving the administration to the second floor. The other options kept it at the main floor. We could do it on the second floor because we could bring in an accessible entrance if it's up against the hill.
You're, you still have to have an elevator in the building, so you're not saving anything. I can always put the.
It's a storage mezzanine, and so you don't need access to a permanent elevator wise. You would as an office because then you'd have to have circulation between the two floors, but not if it's a storage mezzanine.
So, but before we go down the road of designing the, the building on this site, how much is it going to cost to bring sewer and water to this? I mean, you know, so I'm, I'm not interested in, I, I mean, this, this is a good and useful discussion. But how much is this going to cost? So if the building costs $23 million, what's it cost to get sewer and water there?
The estimate, the next guy's going to tell us. The estimate in the document was $10 million.
So is, so, okay, thank you. So really.
It's wrong.
So what's the number?
I think that's the next presentation.
You, you want to bring up Mike and he can answer the financial questions?
Yeah, because I think you can think about this a little bit more and it answers one of the questions in Steve's presentation of where do we pursue? Question? Bonhomie Falls built off of an existing Department of Public Works building. If you're talking about the one off of Good Hope? We can get into that after this presentation here. Yeah, we've asked him similar questions in regards to other communities because Brown Deer has, has recently built a Department of Public Works. So as, like you said, Bonhomie Falls and a couple of other surrounding communities have as well for comparison of what they did. But it's a good question. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. I'm Mike Moore, President Moore Construction Services. And we're engaged to provide an opinion of costs to the program that was being developed. So you can see the, the spreadsheet is put together. This is the unit cost ranges. We wanted to provide ranges because the details just aren't vetted out just yet. But we broke it down into the equipment.
But we broke it down into the equipment areas and these are, are vetted out from Wayne's program. It's, you can see it's seventy-nine thousand square feet. And basically, that's a precast rectangle building. And at a mid-cost range, it's on the market right now, it's about eighty dollars a square foot. We're looking at this time and there's a fair amount of discussion on saving building four and five. There's some maintenance to do into those buildings, but the oldest vintage is year two thousand. The other one I believe said was built in two thousand and five. There's some general maintenance, maybe some lighting, but all in all, they're in good repair. I would say that it'd be very expensive to move those. Those are not easily moved. If you're going to eliminate them, they would be, have to be demoed. Shopway areas and the office areas, that's that seventeen thousand square feet that Wayne was talking about. The reason the thirty-five hundred square feet is that's actual people being in, in office space. We have some site work that needs to take place. Site work would be landscaping and parking lots, sidewalks, those sorts of things. There are three buildings that need to get demoed and that's the mid-cost range of the one hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then you can see the mechanics area. That space is a little more costly. There's, they just require a different set, more doors, different ventilation. It's a little more costly to build. So, you could see overall programs, the one hundred and thirty-nine thousand square feet. Now, the area below that FFNE stands for fixtures, furniture and equipment. Furniture, IT computers, those sorts of things has to go in that office space. Right now, there is a fueling station on site. Depending upon how the layout is, do you need a new one? If we go to a new one, it's above ground, not below ground. Right now, yours is below grade. If the site layout works and you can keep it, that's fine, but we don't know at this point. The salt shed is across the street. We, there is some roofing that needs to get done, some general deferred maintenance that needs to take place. It doesn't need to be replaced, but it does, we wanted to make sure we allotted some money to do that work. Cranes hoist and lifts throughout the, the new equipment area and mechanics area. We need to have equipment there that's not defined. And these next two were placeholders. One, if you have to relocate the ball fields, it's got to go somewhere. So, just, we plugged in a number. And then we did get the utility, the sewer and water budget from the utility and that is two million dollars. There's bedrock, it has to come into the site. You're going to need sewer and water. There's soft costs and engineering fees, it's EM fees. And at this point, because it's so early in the design, there's a ten percent contingency. We haven't defined things yet. But one thing that is not on here is land acquisition. It doesn't, assuming that the, if it stays in this site, you already own this property. And so, land acquisition is not in this cost. You can see at the very bottom, it's a hundred and fifty-six dollars a square foot all in. If you were to demolish and then rebuild the ten thousand square feet of building four and five, you could see that you'd add roughly one point two million in that case. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sir? I did, I have questions. So, you had the salt shed miscellaneous repairs up to like a hundred thousand dollars. Didn't we just fix that thing? Didn't we just fix the salt dome? I thought we played like two years ago, we put a roof on it or, or something. Sure, we did. New garage door? What? Something? I remember something with that salt shed just recently.
So, there again, if you had spent it, you'd take it off the sheet.
All right. So, the cost here, you still have, you're still doing things at buildings four and five, so it's not a total savings in regards to it. There's still a fair amount of upgrades all the way around. I, I don't know. I, I'd still be curious to know what it would, would cost on, on, I mean, are we adding ten million dollars? Are we adding two million dollars if we would look at a brand-new site? To where you could almost, you could almost more conducively engineer it for something that works rather than, I mean, this, this site where it started, of course, was the old village hall and it's been built on and, and buildings have been jimming in there for years. And now we're going back to, okay, let's jimmy a really big building in there now because it makes sense to keep this property because we own it. And some of that makes sense to me. But when we start to, to look at it on, on how much we're shifting and moving and, and taking away or leaving behind, I don't know. I mean, I, I'd still like to see it. A, a different location option that makes more sense. Like Trustee Hudson said, this thing's going to last twenty-five years plus the future of this village. If we're building it for ten years, that's short-sighted of us. And I'm not looking for the, you know, the, the highest and best of, of all pieces, but I'm also looking for something that works better than this property has because we've made it work for us by taking an old village hall and saying, okay, well, it's ours, so now it's Department of Public Works. Here you go. That's almost as good as the police station. Well, it used to be a library, but now it's a police station. Good luck. And, and we've seen some of the result of that. Is, is it time now since we're, we're at a point of, of growth and a growth spurt to, to look at something that works for us rather than just make it work for us?
I would say that a, a couple of, a couple of points. I think first of all, if you were talking to staff about what would you like to see, it would be great. Let's find the perfect location, a nice rectangular spot and that has plenty of room for growth and, and then build the facility on it. I think it is, and I think Mike Paulus from Gray could speak to this as well. They've worked for the number of communities. He could provide some information or background on what other communities have gone through this process. But citing a public works location is not easy. Very few people want to live near a public works facility. There's dozens of trucks going out at all hours of the night and morning. They're loud. There, you know, there's, there's exhaust, there's traffic. I've been involved in that process before and, you know, every site that's come up is it's going to be a roomful of people who don't want it there. Getting a piece of land that large that has access to sewer and water, those pieces of property are in high demand in the village. You can see the development out of Holy Hill that's taking place because of the sewer and water access. So, we'd be competing to purchase that land against the, the private sector companies that are, are, are looking to get that. And there would be a, there would be a cost associated with that. And, and there is the element of time. I think, you know, and again, and we do have some time, but I think that, that process is likely going to take, you know, months, maybe a year to, to be able to identify a site, negotiate a price with, with the, the property owners and then bring that back to the village board.
Trustee Hudson? Looks like you have a question?
Not necessarily a question, but, but, but a, a statement. So, a, as we look to the future of Germantown and we look out twenty years and thirty years, what do we see ourselves? Do we see ourselves as a, a building that is retrofitted on a lot that doesn't work for us? Or are we building a community that's going to be a destination community for the citizens and the employees? That's what the question is. And I hope that we answer that question the right way this time.
Trustee Kaminsky?
It seems like all of our questions and concerns are surrounding land. And we don't have any of those speculative answers tonight unless we stay on the site. We're going to be buying land no matter what. We're going to either be purchasing land, much more difficult to place a DG, DPW facility there, or we're going to be buying land to replace ball fields. So, we're going to have to buy land anyway. I think for my next step, we can go around in circles on this all night long. But for my next step, I would want to know what potential there is to relocate DPW somewhere else. We may find out there is very little potential at even halfway reasonable cost. And then we'll go back to the shoehorn method. Definitely, I think will be much easier to buy land for baseball fields. Who wouldn't want that in their neighborhood? You know, everybody's going to be clamoring for that. Now, I mean, and honestly, best of all possible worlds, we find some land that we can afford as, as we're talking about here and place a DPW site somewhere where it makes sense, but not close to other residences. And you might end up with two more baseball fields at the current site. We might have a park there, which I think would benefit everybody. And I don't think that's a bad direction to look in frankly. So, I think we need, need to have some answers on land or not just answers, but just something to help feed our intelligence on this. Because we're going to circle this all night long and we're not going to come up with anything except what's out there.
Well, it goes back to Steve's presentation of should staff continue to work on design and bid documents for the new public works facility at current location? Or should staff work to identify a new location for the new public works facility? Or should staff work to identify alternative locations for a baseball facility? Yes, the both is what you're saying.
Yeah, we have to. How can you answer this?
I'm going to go to Trustee Jan Miller before I go to Village Attorney.
Just to build on what Trustee Kaminsky was saying, I agree with you. We, I think we need to do both. We need to look for opportunities for property that will accommodate a big DPW. But I envision, I'm with Trustee Hudson, why not make this ballpark world-class ballpark for Little Leaguers world-class? If you travel throughout the state and you go down to Racine, Kenosha, there are ballpark facilities where they have big concession stands, they have four diamonds altogether and it's a big piece of property and it's a destination. And a ballpark facility would also bring in revenue, visitors, and it would be forward-thinking. So, you would hit it for, I mean, you'd really make the, the baseball people happy. And who doesn't like baseball? And perhaps we could come up with a better design? Maybe there's something, I mean, I think you got this project last March or March and maybe there's a better design that could come of these sketches right now. You, you never know. And I've always seen, personally, I would think it would be safer to have your maintenance area separate from and not above and not have your offices above it. I would not want maintenance below my office. That's just me.
Village Attorney?
The only, I guess, question that I would have as staff would look to potential sites for either one of these purposes for that matter. Is there any appetites to utilize eminent domain or are we looking at just whatever the market is going to willingly sell us? Does that'll change your answer too in terms of what's available or not?
We have all got it up now.
Trustee and I were, first of all, let's face it, we just drove the price up a little into this discussion. So, I'm sure it isn't going to be cheap report. But I, I'm going to go back to something that was mentioned before. Again, this, we're looking to build a building that's going to last twenty to thirty to forty years. So, if, if we're going to wedge it on a, a piece of property, to me, it's, it's throwing money out the window because what we've done is put future boards in peril. Let's find a site that will allow itself to also be, as, as time goes on, they, they're going to need to add on to this building. Let's not put future boards in the same spot and say, here, you got this little piece of property, now try and figure it out. And if you're going to spend twenty-some million dollars, hopefully less, you know, I, I think it demands an adequate site. I, I personally too, I feel that we should go both ways. Look, look what's available. Not, you know, I agree with the baseball. I, I think baseball stays there. I personally really think we should go to look out throughout the community and maybe there's nothing there. But let's exhaust that effort first and see what's there. I'm sure it's not going to be cheap.
For, for either side, and I agree with you. And, and I think we need to take advantage of the offer of that community to help and be part of it and have that input because they seem very enthusiastic in not only of, of helping to make it a better facility, but also the fundraising that it might take to, to offset some of those costs for the village. And a motivated group of people can do wonders when we've seen some of that in regards to our outdoor performance arts pavilion and things like that. When people get behind a, that type of, of, of a project around Germantown, Germantown steps up and usually helps make that successful. Trustee Kaminsky?
As, as far as a village attorney's question about eminent domain, I think that will be determined by what we do or do not find that's available, that has water and sewer potential for connectivity and what might be on that property. I don't know that's something that the village has ever done, but I don't think we should close our mind to it either.
I echo Terry. That, I, I think that is wonderful. And I think if we could even find maybe the location to even keep these two, the public works and the baseball fields together, but still somehow create a state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line baseball fields that actually don't get flooded every time it rains and actually have concession stands and bathrooms that work and don't get clogged non-stop and then no bathrooms at all at our fields, it's pathetic. And then after, okay, after a baseball game, you can always tell where every single team goes in Germantown. Roberts. Imagine all of the business that it would bring if we had more baseball teams. We'd have to build more restaurants. Imagine that. Germantown's been screaming for it for years. We don't want manufacturing, we want restaurants. We want places to shop. A baseball field that is state-of-the-art, it would bring that into Germantown.
Trustee Paul?
So, I don't think having this discussion is going to skyrocket the prices. We understand what the prices are. Simply go out to Holy Hill Road, there's the price of land out there. There's a bunch of businesses already bought the land. We have the numbers. We could buy another piece of property out there, twenty acres. It's got sewer and water to it, so we don't have to extend sewer. We know what the cost of that's going to be. We're going to take it from the other people. We did a quick look over here and there are several properties that would work well. They're in transition properties that are between residential and between industrial. There needs to be a transition, something this could fit in there. It's, they're, they're zoned industrial, it would fit. Properties that have been tried to be sold for years and haven't been. There, there's developers wanting to sell them, but nobody wants them. This could be one of those, let's take over one of those places that nobody wants and we'll put an industrial, put our business there. I think the cost of doing a, buying land for a baseball field is far too low. What does it cost to build a building? For a park? A billion dollars for something that nobody likes? One point four million dollars. You've got one point four million dollars for the whole baseball field. So, that's going to be a lot more expensive if we're going to build a new build, a new outbuilding for a new park. So, if we can keep the, the baseball fields where they're at and move the public works to a new location, I think there's plenty of flat land that a flat building would go on and work very well.
Do these costs have the increase of current materials built into them?
And that, that's the reason for the low, medium and high to account for that. There's no real exact science to where the costs are with this pandemic.
Right.
So, costs are going up dramatically.
Leaps and bounds, yeah? Okay. Other presentations? That's it? Any other questions? Comments? Nothing? All right, we appreciate, thank you for your presentations. We appreciate the information. As you can see, we still have some things to think about, but we're looking forward to what you can do with some of our ideas and looking for ideas from you as to how we can make it work best, not only for the village, but also for the future. So thank you very much. Next item. Next item under new business is item E, Administrator Performance Review. The village board may convene in the closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five subsection one, sub-paragraph C for considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data for any public employee or which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and may convene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session with the members of the board and the village administrator.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion to go into closed session? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminski? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye. Before we go into closed session, our next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, May seventeenth at seven PM here at the village hall boardroom or also accessed via WebEx. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching, and have a good night. Couple of minutes before we go into closed session.